Tonight's, January 16th, 2024, City Council meeting, I would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we'll call on Councilmember Ronnie Wall for tonight's invocation.
Pray with me. We bow our heads to ask for a path that leads us, to use our talents to the best of our ability for the people of our city. Let us all be truly thankful for another day, to rejoice in our families as we pray for those alone, to appreciate what we have, and to remember there are many with much less. As we work through our busy lives, remind us to save some time to help someone make it through theirs. Guide us to enjoy the day we have, and glad for the one tomorrow. And always, we pray for peace. Please be with this council and staff members if we make decisions that will affect our citizens in our community. Amen.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, I'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflict of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts occurring tonight to that item.
None.
None.
Our next item is the Approval of Minutes, December 4th, 2023, Work Session, January 2nd, 2024, City Council Meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the Approval of Minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the Adoption of the Agenda. This time, we'll entertain a motion on the Agenda.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the Consent Agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to approve the following temporary street closing request during the St. Patty's Day Bash special event hosted by the Burlington Recreation and Parks Department on Friday, March 15th, 2024, from 2:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m., Front Street from Spring Street to Earth Street, and Main Street from Davis Street to Front Street. Item B, to approve a notice of intent to adopt a resolution amending the existing lease of property located at the Joe Davidson Park Tower located at 3715A Royal Retreat Road to New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for the purpose of providing cellular and wireless Internet service following a 30-day legal advertisement. Item C, to authorize the City of Burlington Information Technology Department and Emergency Management to apply for a FY2023 State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program, SLCGP, to seek funding opportunities for eligible projects. Item D, to approve the reclassification of the following two positions in the Human Resources Department effective upon City Council approval. Human Resources Generalist, Level 34, to Assistant HR Director, Level 37, and Human Resources Technician, Level 21, to HR Specialist, Level 26. Item E, to approve modifications to the 2024 Fees and Charges Schedule recommended for the following Recreation and Parks Youth Programs. Rec Days from $15 to $20 per day, and After-School Program Full-Time from $140 to $160 per month, and Part-Time from $90 to $110 per month. Item F, to approve Budget Amendment 2024-24 for Recreation and Parks to allocate funds awarded by Piedmont Tribe Regional Council Area Agency on Aging for Conotow Senior Center Programming Materials. Item G, to approve Budget Amendment 2024-26 for the Animal Services to allocate funds received from grants and donations to support medical care of animals and purchase diagnostic medical imaging equipment. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the Consent Agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we'll move into our Public Hearings. We have two public hearings scheduled this evening. Item One, a public hearing has been scheduled for City Council to consider a request to rezon property from High Density Residential to General Business Limited Use, GBLU. The property is located northwest from the intersection of Durham Street and Riverview Drive on the south side of Durham Street, addressed as 2416 Durham Street, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 127081. At this time, we'll recognize our Planning Director, Jamie Lawson. Welcome, Jamie.
Good evening, everyone. So this item was presented to you at your January 2nd, 2024 meeting, and has been properly advertised, shown on the map in teal is the subject's property. It is currently zoned High Density Residential, and the applicant is requesting a zoning change to General Business with a limited use. There are, just as a reminder, there are a total of 114 permitted uses within the General Business District. The applicant is requesting three. Automobile repair and servicing, automobile towing and storage, and automobile sales or rentals. So that's automobile repair and servicing, sales and rental, and towing, and storage lots. Now, as you can see from this map, the future land use designation of the area is suburban residential. However, as we discussed during the work session, there are a number of non-residential uses within this area, including Mitchell's Roofing, the second time around Billiard Supply Shop, a medical supply shop, other auto-related uses, a convenience store down the street. All of those properties are also within the general business zoning district. You can see, again, on the zoning map. So, in general, a good portion of this area is already inconsistent with the future land use designation. So, staff is recommending the rezoning request. Given the shape and the size of the property and its location, we did not feel that it would be in character with a residential subdivision, and it would be consistent with some of the other non-residential uses within the area. So, we are recommending approval with option number two in your consistency statement sheet. The applicant is here, as well as I am, in case you have any additional questions.
Any questions for Jamie at this time? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on Item One under Public Hearings this evening? Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on Item One under Public Hearings this evening? Yes, ma'am. Could you please come forward? Welcome. If you don't mind, please state your name and address. Our City Clerk can record it.
Tiffany Turley, 2442 Durham Street Extension, which would be the lot directly beside the property.
Okay.
My concern, several, many concerns, but the runoff from, well, first of all, I was listening when she said that they want a limited use. Can someone tell me what declares it limited use?
So, but-
Because they named three different businesses. I don't see how that kind of contradicting to me.
Well, I think the statement was, in general, if it was just general business, there would be 140 permitted uses.
114.
114. So, by them limiting the use, they chose three out of those 114. So, the other 111 are restricted. Cannot do just those three items.
Okay. The disposal and the runoff of what's going to be coming through a business such as an auto repair shop is my concern, considering that it's within feet of my well. So, contamination is really a large concern for me. Also, the runoff that would go into my garden, which exists within feet of that want-to-be business, the property, came an even larger concern when we got flooded the other day, and I saw where all of that that comes from, because we're downhill, that ends up in my yard. So, it was, you know, an even larger concern then. So, contamination in my well is a really big deal. I mean, we have, us is a big concern, but we have a little girl, you know? We bought this land to raise her there, and we want to do things like grow our own food, but I don't want to be nervous about it being contaminated soil. And from the research that I've done, a well is contaminated through seeping of the soil. And so, that's a very large concern. The other thing was, I don't remember your name, I'm sorry. What's it, Jamie? When Jamie was speaking about the rezoning, she was, this time, nothing was mentioned. The owner of the property was saying originally that she wanted to rezone it to business because it wouldn't perk as a residential. So, nothing was mentioned about that this time. And then, again, if it's going to be a business, is there going to be a restroom? And how is there going to be a restroom and all that if it doesn't perk? So, the issues that were addressed the last time, I guess it perks now?
Well, I think more than likely, they'll be tapping on the city water and sewer, or not.
Yeah, I mean, typically, as you're aware, when we review rezoning requests and limited use requests, we're not looking at a site plan, we're not looking at how they're connecting to utilities, we're just looking at the request and the permitted, and the requested uses. So, I know that the applicant is here if they want to or are able to answer some of those questions, but it's not something that staff represented that it can perk or it can't perk, where there is ability to connect or not.
Well, I think just in general, maybe if there are concerns, once a, if this is approved to rezon it General Business Limited Use, then it would be an entirely, next round of steps that would have to be complied for maybe a lot of the things that you're concerned about. And Jamie, do you want to explain briefly that process?
Yeah, following any development request for any new business, new building, new improvements, an applicant will follow the Technical Review Committee procedure and apply for a site plan application. So, they would then prepare a plan that would show all of the different improvements, the building location, the parking, any of the landscaping, the screening, any lighting, all of those different things, whatever they're proposing would be part of the site plan application, as well as, you know, some infrastructure would be separated and apart from the TRC, but that would be reviewed at that same time as well, through infrastructure permits, through, if it depends on what the utility is going to be, that kind of would dictate whether it would be through Health Department or through city staff.
Does she have a legitimate concern in reference to water off of this property going onto her property or the well she was speaking about?
I would imagine with the heavy storms that we got, there's potential for runoff, whether or not, I can't speak to the impact to her well. I know that through the different uses that there are being proposed, there are use-specific standards dealing with landscaping and buffering. That is really what the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, and the zoning really addresses. We don't, separate and apart, other departments are looking at stormwater issues.
I don't want to get in the weeds, but I saw it out there yesterday, and it's a fairly big lot.
And just so, she's talking about-
Yeah, that's our property.
This property here.
Yeah, I'm talking about the lot here even being developed, but if I recall correctly, there is a slope going back towards her lot. And the question is, and this is getting way too in the weeds, but what's being proposed is, I mean, we don't know what will be in terms of pavement for interest in there with vehicles, for concrete for the building, I'm sure for the building slab itself. You have a ditch in front of it, I believe, beside the road, but it's built up somehow, if I'm not mistaken. It probably didn't come down equal to the road itself, because it's not coming out. There's a drop-off.
There's a road, the ditch, a small ditch, and then our front yard. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and your grave, if I'm not mistaken, is-
But before that is, I mean, there's no, yeah, the land is just-
The grave is back towards your house, the way it falls. Obviously, that can be corrected if you go in and did surface work, but I think what she's saying is a very valid point in terms of-
I mean, the well is, I mean, I wish we had measured. I don't, six feet of where, I mean, maybe could possibly be ratchet strapped to our tree currently, their fence. I don't know. You know, that's how close this fence would be. It's within feet, less than 10, you know, six feet of their-
Property over?
Yes. So, we're not talking like, I mean, that's really, really close. And, you know, so, I mean, this is, so many liquids are involved in a mechanical shop as far as, I mean, how is all that going to be contained? How can we guarantee that my well is not going to be contaminated, or just my land right there?
I do have a little experience in this. There are a lot of federal guidelines and state guidelines that require, they can't just pour oil or mixtures out. That's illegal. Typically, even where there is going to be reconditioning of vehicles, even spraying water over them, they generally have an oil and water separator. Has to be cleaned out. So, as far as that goes, assuming that someone is in there and abides by the law, there are laws in place to prevent that from happening.
Yeah, I think that any mechanic shop I've been to, there's generally oil all over everywhere, the parking lot, the garage bay, just generally speaking. I'm not saying it couldn't be pristine, because I have been into a Ferrari mechanic shop as well, and they are very pristine. But, you know, so that's my largest concern. I mean, that's a very big concern, you know, because I think often by the time that's happening, by the time we would notice that's happening, it might be a little late to, you know, by the time somebody notices contamination like that, let's say my daughter has issues later, it would be, it would be too late to know. And how long had we been, you know, subjected to that? You know, I'm all for small businesses, but I have to say, when it comes to something like that, a little, it's a little bit more serious. If it was a bakery shop going in next door, I probably wouldn't love it either, because the trees are gone and everything, but it wouldn't be a concern to my health, like it is a garage. That's my big concern.
Sure.
So, that lot had not been developed at all before. Is that correct?
No, it was tree, yeah.
And they came in and removed trees, did some grading, right? A rough grading?
Sure, I haven't taken a good look at the property. It's not my property to be on. But, yeah, there's hardly any, yeah, they cleared it to put whatever they wanted to put there, so.
Okay. Duly noted. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm Robert Taylor, also the 2442 Durham Street Extension. And what you're saying about the ditch, it does do exactly what you said, but as soon as it gets towards the bottom of our property, well, halfway down our property, where our chicken coop is, the water just turns and floods that section down there and runs to a creek.
Stamped?
Yeah, yeah, it goes down, it's a rodent, it just goes, feeds right into the creek behind our house. So, that's the other thing is, we also have, we got poultry there right now, hoping to get a horse or two on there. So, we also will have livestock on top of the garden as well, and we're just trying to keep everything as safe as we can. And with the, with the other, they said, it mentioned car storage, even in the parking lot where they're not being stored, there's runoff from oil you see in the rain. So, there's going to be, this is unavoidable. With our well being six feet away from it, it's just a large concern. I just wanted to include that part about the water flooding down there and the problem with the hill. But, yeah, we're right by the hill. Where it's at. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side would like to speak on Item One under Public Hearings?
Hey, Angie Ball. Address is 107 Michael Drive, Gibsonville. Yeah, I want to speak about this property right here. We purchased it summertime. Future plans is to have a small mechanic shop, tinker on cars, that and such. The business we plan on relocating is, I have right now on Meven Street, it's been there since 2007. We work on our rollbacks for Alamance Towing and Recovery. We have city contracts, Elon contracts, all of it and the above. So, we do work on our vehicles time to time to keep them on the road. We have graded a portion of this property, not all of it. It was already halfway cleared out. We did remove several trees, but it was not a wooded- out, we did remove several trees, but it was not a wooded lot. There is a large, probably 10, 15-foot slope at the front of our property way hitting Durham I don't know what else you want me to say, questions, bring it.
Questions about?
You heard the young lady's concerns and the gentleman's?
I did.
What would you have to say about any of that?
All right, so with their concerns, actually, where they're talking about, the property line is close to their well. I was doing research with Environmental Health Department, which we are in contact with them, and the land is getting perked as we speak, we couldn't have it in time enough for this meeting, but they are working on it. And they did come out and look at the property, and they are coming back again to look at the property. We were actually just there yesterday to look at the runoff flows and stuff like that, and from where we have cleared and graded the property flat, there is red clay, mud, I didn't see much runoff at all going down that hill right there. The well's probably been there about as long as their house has been there, there's no information on their well whatsoever through the Environmental Health Department. So the, where our lot is, closer to Riverview, Melrose Drive area is where our building plans on going, and yes, it's going to be on the concrete slab. Their house, from where our building's probably going to go, is probably 400, 450 feet from where their house is. So of course, we've talked to planning and zoning about, you know, shrubberies and bushes and fencing and so forth, so we are aware of what needs to be done. Going back to having a mechanic shop and working on our trucks and stuff like that, no, we don't just sling oil in a dumpster, we don't sling it trashcan, we don't throw it on the ground. There's a company that we use called Crystal Clean, they're well-known, a lot of people around us where we are located at right now use it, and they are containers that are being, and then once they're full, they come and collect it. So that's where the disposable oils, antifreeze's, and so forth go. Our shop isn't dirty, outside's nice, ask our landlord, since we've been there since 2007, don't have complaints, only complaints is, you know, not much of anything. Our shop stays clean, the outside stays clean, you can go any time of the day. I don't see an issue with it being rezoned, even though it's classified as, you know, high-density, where it's located at. We've got Dale's Towing over there, Mitchell's Roofing, Dane Miller's Motorcycle Shop, right across their street, so I don't see any issues in that. But we're just asking to change it resident, I mean residential into commercial. I have property next to there, so we would eventually, you know, like to all be together and have our business there, and-
I just wanted to make-
I'm doing the proper step, yes.
The reason I asked the question, I just wanted to make sure that you've heard her concerns in reference to the well.
Yes, so I've talked to Environmental Health, and the first thing out of my mouth is, is our concern is, is the neighbors' concern, they state that the well's going to get contaminated.
Right.
And they go, it's impossible. It's not 20 years ago, it's not 40 years ago, things have changed, there's chemicals, there's products, there's absorbent, there's a way to collect all the oils and fluids and so, you know, so forth, so I can understand that, yes.
Sure.
But it, it's not, it's 2024, so-
Is that right?
Um, [laughing].
Good.
Any other questions y'all got for me?
Ms. Ball?
Good.
I don't think so, thank you.
Thank you, babe.
Thank you.
Yeah. Say, I have a question of Jamie, and you want to recognize the kind of speaker back there?
Yes.
I, you know, I'll, I'll ask you in a minute.
I'm sorry. My name's Roger Hayes. I've owned both, all of this property for over 40 years. I know about the well, I know about the runoff of the water, I know the slope of the land, if there's any questions.
I have no questions, thank you.
Ms. Senator, don't want to mislead anybody, if I'm not mistaken, the slope of the land comes from the back?
It falls toward the woods mostly, it does fall toward the front, but the biggest majority of the water runs straight to a culvert drain where he's built the building, and he has his chicken lot. There is a four-foot culvert drain that drains water off the state on both sides of the road, right where he's got that.
When you're saying he, you're talking about the property to the back of this property?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I owned, I owned all that property at one time.
Okay, okay. So I think what, I want to make sure I got this correct, the neighbor's property we're talking about is located-
Behind me.
Behind you, okay.
And as far as the well, when the city of Burlington come in and down the water line through that area, they condemned all the wells. The only well that's on that property now is because where it's at is because Elise Tickle worked with the health department. And when she ran out of water, there's four wells on that property.
On which property?
Their property.
Their property, okay.
There's four wells on there, she couldn't get water. So they went all the way to the corner of both property lines, my property line and their property line, I mean to the very limit, which was against all reality to start with, because it's always been a certain distance from property lines, but she had to to get water. That's why the well is located where it's at.
To the other three wells on the property, or?
No, good.
I'm good, okay.
They had told her that she needed to tap into the water, when she did, but at her age, they decided to sell the place, and it never was done.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, yes, sir, and thank you for being here and speaking. So I want to know more, so you've owned this property, what are your thoughts on that contamination? I just want to know from your perspective with her concerns.
That area, around there, even the businesses, over there where Mitchell's is, that whole area was a landfill of asphalt roofing that was tore off, buried for years. That whole area right there is contaminated, as far as I'm concerned. I grew up in that area, I know that area, and I'm sure most of y'all are old enough to know that if you ever went through that area at one time, there used to be a big junkyard there.
That's right.
And it was a little, small building, and a whole house there. That, that's all was there, and as they'd done roofing for years up at the mill and stuff like that, when they tore a roof off, they'd carry it there and dump it out of a dump truck there in the yard. So, you know, and then one day, when the city come through, they said, you know, you need to clean this up. So he started hauling dirt, and he covered all this up. Now there's all kind of buildings built there. I know this area because I grew up in this area, you know.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Trace, appreciate it. Anyone else on this side like to speak? Hearing none at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, Mr. Mayor, could we, may I ask Jamie a question? A notice to P&amp;Z voted, you know, to deny the request, was that because P&amp;Z thought it should be residential, or?
Their concerns, I think hearing the neighbors' concerns, they had issues pertaining to the potential uses and the impact to, to the neighbors.
Not, not necessarily, they thought it would be good for residential uses, but it was more of the potential impact from what was proposed, is that a correct statement?
Correct.
Okay.
Just looking back through my notes, too.
Oh, is it too late for me to speak?
Impact of commercial businesses, auto repair on neighboring properties, well contamination, noise, screening, and buffering.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it too late to say anything?
No, ma'am, please come forward if you have something.
I couldn't help but notice the use of humor when she was up here stating that it's 2024, and how I guess somehow that land can't be contaminated because it's 2024. I guess I don't understand that. And, I mean, it sounds like you're saying, well, we passed this, yeah, then there's all this other stuff that's going to happen in order for it to actually happen, and it's like, I mean, I'm, I'm trying not to get emotional, but my thought is, that's just one more step closer to continuing to worry about whether it is contaminated or not. So then it's like, okay, well, they push it, and what if I just wait till the damn thing passes completely and then worry all the time about contamination? I don't think anybody in here is a scientist to know whether that, the backstory of that or how true that is, or whether it cannot be contaminated or not, so then you start to think, well, do I scramble my ass to sell my house?
Sure.
And if one minute we're saying it's 2024, so contamination ain't happening to soil, the next minute we're standing up here and saying it's already contaminated, well, either it is or it isn't.
Well-
So, I mean, that's, that's-
Point made.
You know, so, and he did grow up here, and that was his land at one point, but it's not anymore, but I, you know what, I mean, would he have wanted to raise his little girl there, because that's his little girl.
Ma'am, we, we understand.
You know, so, well, I'm sure other people in here have little, little children too at one point, and so I'd like for everybody to strongly consider it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would prefer, unless there's something different to be added to public hearing, I mean, I don't, we, we need, cooler heads need to prevail, let's stick to the facts. So, Ms. Ball, do you want to add something else?
Yes, I do. So just to show a cool break from the Environmental Health Department, from Bill Mitchell's, in 1990, he did have a landfill in his, on his whole lot, all the whole acres that he owned, and it was basically used as a car lot, junkyard, salvage, everything.
Remember it, yeah.
All right, well, the Environmental Health sent him, AMBRO, they sent him information right here stating that he had a certain amount of timeframe to remove all the waste, bring in soil, whole nine yards, and he also had to have it tested. So this was back in the 90s, in 2007, they also, through the Environmental Health Department, had a well sample test done on their property to make sure the well was good, and it passed, there was nothing, no contamination, no anything. So I, my, but the way my mind thinks is if this was here for all these years, and it's still there now, and it's still being tested, and it's fine, there, there's a lot to contaminate soil. That's, that's really all I want to show, is I do have proof through Environmental Health that I, I do take this seriously, I have reviewed it, I have talked with Environmental Health and people from the city of Burlington, and when I asked them, what about the contamination of their well? And they, they state it'll take a whole, you literally have to sit there and pour buckets of oil and whatnot in the soil for it to be contaminated. I am tapping into city water when we're able, if we get passed, and it does run along down Durham Street Extension, so others can also tap in other ways, that's a second option, but I mean, I don't, that's all I have to say, if there's any more further questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Now you made the motion.
Oh, I did? Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was trying to move this along.
I think you, yeah, I think you got it well covered.
Mr. Bowden's here this evening, I just hope you're not tripping me up like that.
Yeah, he put me up to it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Warner, second, by Councilmember Ward. Is there, is that good now? All in, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, can you post?
Afraid to vote.
Thank you. You know, I do appreciate everyone's comments, I think it's really important, that this council's always tried to listen to our boards and commissions, property and zoning, our planning and zoning, P&amp;Z, we listen to city staff, we have public hearings to hear residents speak. This is a rezoning request for three items in the general business limited use purpose, out of 114, it's been limited to three. And there's a, there is an entirely different process once, if this is approved, for the rezoning. And there are, I, I understand, I did not read any humor into what the person was saying, but there are a lot of restrictions in 2024 about how something needs to be developed and what can go in, and I think that's important, that we understand that. No one can guarantee that a property owner's going to abide by all the laws, if so, we wouldn't need these young men right over here. But there are restrictions that if we are all good citizens, law-abiding citizens, they protect things against that soil or those wells being contaminated. But I did want to just keep in mind and put forth for everyone's attention that tonight, this is, I'm talking about a general business limited use rezoning on those two, those three items to be allowed, but not the site plan, and not what's going in, and not what's going to be done, that's an entirely different process moving forward, so that's all I wanted to say. If there's any other questions in council? If not, we'll entertain a motion on item one.
There, I'll, I'll weigh in on this, I think probably the reason I asked the question that I did, you know, with, with land use, you know, the issue is, is what, you know, is the contemplated use of it, would, is that, I guess for lack of a better word, is that viable, you know, is it residential, probably not, so, and also to pick up on the points you made, with, with the protections we now have, I don't think the concerns, at least if I understand correctly, that was raised about, you know, the things that could happen if a business were there, I think there are safeguards that are in place, quite frankly, that would protect against that. So having said that it's not going to be used, you know, not developed for residential, and there are safeguards to protect against those concerns that's been raised, I'll, I'll make a motion to, you know, I'll, I'll make a motion with number, option number two. I make a motion to approve the request to rezone property from high-density residential, HDR, to general business limited use, GBLU. The property is located northwest from the intersection of Durham Street and Riverview Drive on the south side of Durham Street, addressed as 2416 Durham Street, and consisting of Alamat County Tax Identification Number 127081. While the request is inconsistent with the future land use map in Section 4, Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan, in that it caused, in that it caused this area to have suburban residential uses, the request is compatible with existing commercial uses and zoning in the area. The request is compatible with existing general business zoning district in the area, larger-scale commercial and manufacturing operations, auto-related uses, and a small-scale retail convenience store. The action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that the comprehensive plan encourages a sustainable balance of land uses. The request is compatible with the existing zoning land, existing zone and land uses in the area. The property's location, size, configuration, as well as the existing non-residential land use pattern make it suitable for commercial use.
Thank you. For clarity, we do have option two, to approve inconsistent with the land use plan, but amend the land use plan as stated in Councilmember Board's narrative. Is there a second on this item? Is there a second on this item? We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I have to say that I have concerns in reference to what the young lady was speaking about in reference to contamination of the well. I think I heard that both pieces of property could connect, could connect to the city of Burlington's water utilities. And I also can think that Ms. Ball would do the right thing in reference to making sure that it didn't happen, especially with all the discussions that we've had here tonight, knowing that there's a possibility of that. So I trust Ms. Ball to do the right thing in what she said here tonight.
Would that be a second?
Ah, y'all second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion is approved. Our next item, item two, a public hearing has been scheduled for city council to consider request to rezone property from medium-density residential, or MDR, to high-density residential, limited use, HDRLU. The property is located northwest of the intersection of North Main Street and Highland Avenue, on the west side of Highland Avenue, addressed as 106 Highland Avenue, and consisting of Alamanz County Tax Identification Number 137680. At this time, we'll once again recognize our planning director, Jamie Lawson.
Good evening again. So this matter was also presented to you at your January 2nd work session and has been properly advertised. The request is to rezone the property that's highlighted here in teal, that is currently medium-density residential to high-density residential with a limited use. There is only one request in terms of the limited use. It will be for single-family detached dwellings. There was at one point a request to include tiny homes. That was eliminated after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting occurred. Let me just go back to the aerial. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this rezoning unanimously. Staff does recommend it as well, consistent with your option one in the consistency statement sheet. Ideally, the purpose of this request, and I'm not sure if the applicant is here, that's why I was looking back, but, oh, there you are. Sorry, I just snuck in. The purpose of this request is essentially, and I don't want to speak for the applicant, but my understanding is she, at some point in time, may want to subdivide her property, which is here, highlighted in teal, into two lots. The current zoning, MDR, does not allow for that. She would not be able to get two conforming lots. If she was to change the zoning and the zoning was approved, but she, it would create two lots that are essentially 0.17 acres in size, roughly 7,500 and change, which is consist, which is greater than what the high-density residential zoning district does allow for. So let me just simplify it. She has the option of only having the existing home that's on the property right now. Under the current zoning, there could be one duplex on the property. Or if, if the zoning changed, then she could only have two single-family detached homes. So one house now, one duplex now, or two single-family homes if the rezoning was approved.
Now, am I mistaken? It appears as a dwelling or as a building that's located to the, probably into the, to the north. Is that in two different pieces of property?
No, that's on the property.
It's always on the only property totally. Okay, I got you. So, all right.
Again, we don't have any development proposal associated with this. If, if the zoning was approved, it would, it would go through administrative final plat for a subdivision, and it would not go through the technical review committee, just like any other single-family home.
So you said there were three options, correct?
First option, just keep the house as is, combined with tear it down, rebuild one home. Second option, a duplex.
Right.
Current zoning. Third option, if the zoning was approved, subdivide, create two lots.
Thank you.
Okay. I got you. The two lots would be larger than the, our minimum standard.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
And, and we have done a, a quick analysis. There are other lots in that area that are comparable to that size, and some even smaller. Any, any questions for me?
Okay. This is a public hearing under item two, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on item two? Now, we'll move to this side. Is there anyone on this side of the floor that would like to speak on item two that's before us at this point in time? Hearing received and done. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So summing things up, P and Z did recommend approval. Staff has recommended approval on the item before you to high-density residential limited use with the one residential use classification as listed. Any other questions for Jamie or the requesting parties? If not, we'll entertain a motion on item two.
I make a motion to approve the request to rezone property from medium-density residential, MDR, to high-density residential limited use, HDR-LU. The property is located northwest of the intersection of North Main Street and Highland Street, on the west side of Highland Street, addressed as 106 Highland Avenue, and consistent with Alamanz County Tax Identification Number 137680. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4, land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have traditional residential uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential uses. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan's calls for residential uses in the area, and the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So item number two is approved. Moving on next on the agenda is new business. Item three, city council will consider approving Budget Amendment 2024-25 for Recreation and Parks to temporarily convert the Maynard Aquatic Center, or MAC, to an outdoor facility. At this time, we'll recognize our Assistant City Manager, Rachel Kelly. Good evening, Rachel.
All right. I don't have a presentation tonight, just a few words before you consider the budget amendment. This is a follow-up to our December 4th work session discussion about MAC and the closure as a result of the structural report dated November 30th. The facility has been closed since then, and the lifeguard staff has fortunately been reassigned to other departments throughout the city. It's working out very well, and we hope we can retain them. Staff has done some in-depth review of short-term options for the MAC and is recommending a temporary conversion of the facility to an outdoor facility by proceeding with a demolition of the pool enclosure as soon as possible. Before each night's budget amendment, the amount of $450,000 to demolish that pool enclosure, install lighting, make other site improvements such as fencing, landscaping, shade structures and furnishings. If approved, we'll work towards getting the facility open this spring in advance of the typical Memorial Day outdoor season. Due to the nature of the heated pool and the anticipated installation of those lights, we should be able to use the facility longer in the day and longer in the season than we would a typical outdoor facility. We look forward to talking about the future of the MAC. We're planning on bringing that forward at the February work session to discuss a permanent solution, but in the immediate term, we'd be able to take it from unusable to usable for the summer season. I do want to mention Aquatics Director Sam Carlson's here as well, if you've got any operation-type questions.
The budget amendment here is to get it torn down, demolished, so that we can operate it this season. And in the work session, we're going to hear what our options are about moving forward.
I, I've received several telephone calls about this. People that are used to using it for indoor are not very happy. So, one, how many people use the MAC? Sorry.
No, it's okay. Rachel's here.
Yeah. I'm just trying to get some information out.
Yeah. I would say on average, we probably have about 5,000 visits per month. That's a combination of water exercise, lab swimmers, free swim, public swim, and then our programming. So any swim lessons or swim teams that we facilitate.
Okay. So what would be the cost to, for it to go back to indoor? What, I know we talked, we discussed this before. So what was that number again?
Is that what we're going to have presented at the work session?
Yeah, I think that's what we just need to discuss at the work session. The proposal report had a little over 5 million.
Okay. That just need to be able to communicate. So at the February work session, we're going to talk about the possibility of even coming back to an indoor facility?
Yes, sir. That's an option as well.
Okay.
Either, either way, you know, whatever direction council wanted to go, you'd have to get rid of this aging enclosure.
Sure.
That's an end of life. So this, this wouldn't preclude you from going in any direction ever before.
Sure.
Except for rehabbing the existing enclosure, which we think is possible.
Right.
And, and at the February work session as well, that, that's all encompassed as part of our Recreation Master Plan discussion as well. So hopefully we can get a, a better direction for you.
Well, I think it's important because to Kelly's point is, we got to bring it, we got to take that down. Don't have a choice. It's got to come down regardless. But there has been enough people that are concerned that, are, is it ever going to be enclosed again? And I think it's important to document tonight that we're in the research phases to see exactly what that's going to look like from a financial standpoint. How does that fit into our Recreation and Parks Master Plan? And, and all of those items. And we can look forward to that information early February, and then make a decision on what the future looks like as far as enclosing that facility once again.
Rachel, just looking ahead of time here, let's, let's say you mentioned a concept of structure coming down. Obviously, the pool's heated. You mentioned the word lighting. Has it been a thought how you're going to do that lighting if you then intend to go back with another structure?
Yes. Right now, the plan we've got, we've got to dig this out. So we're seeing who might be able to do that work for us. But the plan would be to bring in two pools, one on each side. That would get us the appropriate number of foot candle lighting to, to cover first one program. But those lights would be removable, and we would be able to use them for other facilities. So.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be, you know, throwing good money after bad. We'd be able to use this in different ways.
Okay. Thank you.
Then, just to be clear, so tonight, we are voting on to take the structure down because the structure right now is the reason why it's closed, because the pool can't open. The pool's been closed since November. All we're voting on tonight is to remove the bad portion, well, the coverage.
And to allow us to convert it temporarily, at least. To an outdoor facility. So it can't be. Because we're also doing some upgrades as far as, you know, repairing the concrete from where we've removed the structure, adding some shady options. I guess that would be removed entirely, making sure the fencing is compliant, adding as light gold. So it's not just the demolition that's included in this budget amendment, but enough to remove that and allow us to operate for this season.
Councilmember Wall, I appreciate you for, you know, to, for making sure that the people, because I, too, have received lots of calls. So I want to be clear after this meeting that we have not made a decision on in the future to keep it as enclosed. We're only talking about just removing the structure that needs to go so that we can at least reopen as an outdoor facility for now. Thank you.
An outdoor facility in regular climate, it could probably work from late April to early October.
I think that's certainly the goal.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Good, thank you.
If not, we'll entertain a motion on the Budget Amendment 2024-25 as requested. So moved. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good discussion on that, and we look forward to February's work session. Just don't let no one do the. That way we can get it. Maybe we can afford it. At this time, we'll move into public comments. Our public comments, I will call on public comments for topics not on the agenda. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to five minutes. I noticed tonight, we have multiple, we have multiple comments on the same item. If you are in agreement with what someone has previously said, in the essence of time, we appreciate just acknowledging that. If you have something different, then by all means, you have five minutes. But we generally do pretty good. We hear something and we understand, and we can kind of tell what's going on. And I will try to combine them. They weren't, the ones that are alike, we'll try to hear those together. They weren't all in order once they requested it. So there are four this evening for the Morgantown community. At this time, we'll call on Rena Lockett to please come forward, 759 Hart Pine Drive, Meben, North Carolina. Welcome.
Hey, good afternoon. So my name is Renee Lockett. I live in Morgantown, but have a property open in Morgantown community. And recently, as well, the adjustment committee, I think recently, when adjustment committee met in reference to asking for variance for the properties of Hooker Street over in Morgantown community, respectfully, I'm going to ask this board to consider like, maybe make a decision because the, the board of adjustment was not able to make a decision at that meeting. And then they counseled the Jane were meeting, so we're still waiting a little on what they're going to do about this variance for this property. One thing that we want with accent is that the city council will consider helping to fix this issue and like making it right, however, whatever that looks like because of the runoff for those properties. We have some pictures that we passed out that they brought last time, but we're also presenting it tonight, or what those pictures look like, or what that, what those properties look like at the end of the street, and how close that runoff is to the curb. And then I also, then we talked about a comparison to some other properties in that neighborhood. There were several, which they are, they are not because there's another developer about two streets over that did a great job in coming in and building in that neighborhood, which we very, very much welcome because it's in accordance to our neighborhood. It's, it goes along with what our neighborhood looks like. The houses are back off the street. So that variance, they're asking for, we're asking that they do not get that variance because the runoff is, it has a lot of different issues. Safety concerns, the power lines, the children, the parking, the road is very narrow, future curb and that kind of stuff. So we're just asking that either, that the committee consider like asking the developer or the city take a responsibility for, because they have acknowledged it is a city error, to either just tear the house down, one of them down, move one around, make it fix so that it is, it is in compliance with the codes of their community. Because it's three houses in that, in that lot, you guys, I think it was stated that there's three parcels, and he has a right to do that, but that's what he wants to do. But make them be in, in code with the other properties that's in that area. And so right now, they are not. They are out of zone, they're out of codes, they're running up, they're running to the edge of the ditch, it's ready to street, and it's just not in sync with our community. And we just are asking for that recommendation either to fix the issue with the hole in white, redoing the housing, tearing down, size over, whatever you need to do, but that's our concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, on the Morgantown community, variance issue, Devon Allison, 1117 Hampton Court. Next, on the Morgantown community variance issue, Devon Allison, 1117 Hampton Court, number.
Good afternoon, everyone. My concern of the variance is if the houses need to be torn down, but basically, the safety issue. If you come out of that house, the porch, you're going to go in the ditch. Who wants to live like that? I mean, you need to take it into consideration. It's not something that we, you know, want the developer to have to go through, but you wouldn't want that in your neighborhood. You would not want that in your neighborhood. And I will be coming back to these city council meetings because if we had known what we listened and heard tonight on what you need to do, we would have came and did what we needed to do before we allowed them to even build those houses. Three houses on a little, small lot. Come on now. You're not going to do that in Westboro too. And it has nothing to do with east, west, south, north, black, white, Hispanic, or any of that. It has to do with doing what's right. And we pay taxes. I pay county and city taxes, two taxes. So, I mean, you know, need to take this into consideration. Need to take this into consideration. And like she said, they canceled the meeting. Why was the meeting canceled? We need to know, why was that meeting canceled when you knew that we were supposed to be there to do a vote? And in that meeting, it was three against two, and y'all decided, oh, no, we'll come back. You had three people against it and two people forward. And you said, no, we'll come back. We'll let you know when to come back. And it's just not fair. It's, it's not right. But if you don't do what's right, that blood will be on your hands, not mine.
Thank you. Next, on the Morgantown issue, Alice Ennitt, 1636 Blackwell Road.
I was saying, 1636 Blackwell Road. I've got a few more pictures. I saw those pictures. And I'd like to look at these.
Thank you.
And it's not that I've got any more to say, other than I was wondering when they were building, why are they putting, I call it putting them in the ditch, you know? And I'm like the other girl. I didn't, I didn't know why it was allowed. And I kept watching it. I thought maybe something different was going to happen. But I think it's just greed, just trying to put three houses on a small lot. And it's really a mess. And I wanted to get out there and take a picture when that flood was, because I know it was up to those store steps. I know it had to be up to the doorsteps, because I know what was coming down from my house, and they were going down here. So, I think it needs to, they need to be torn down, moved, whatever. But it looks bad. I'm not saying we got such a great neighborhood. This is awful. It's really awful.
Thank you. Next, on the Morgantown community issue, I believe it's Lynette Williamson, 904 Hunt Street. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Welcome. Come forward. How are you?
My name is Lynette Williamson, and I live at 904, 904 Hunt Street. I was raised over there in the Morgantown community area. And the homes that you are speaking about, that's where my daddy land was at. And when I was five years old, we were from the country there. And there was a store there, this one store called Williamson Grocery Store. And there, there was gas tanks, so gas line. And right next to that store was the field, and then our house, which still stands there on Hooker Street. Now, I will say that the houses, my concern about these two houses that's on Blackwell, they are too close to the street. And I know as a mother who loves her children, you would not want your child to be living in a house like this. I don't care if it is a new house. Safety comes first. Even on my job, my manager says, safety is number one. And the, the feet, whether you step off the porch, when you step off the porch, you're right there in a ditch. It's not like you step off and you can chase somebody around the house. When you step off, you're right in the ditch. They have no front yard. One large concern is the drain outlet. They don't have an outlet. If it rains, the porch, it comes down the hill, they don't have, the rain is going to go, and it's going to settle right there in the ditch. It has nowhere, nowhere to go. And we just had a, last week, it was just, I know it's trouble over there. I know it's. And in that land right next to my daddy's house, in that land, in the middle, in the back of the, where the houses, the little backyard they want to have, it's going to be soaked. It's just wet. Water stains out there. It was standing, that's been standing out there. And also, like I said, safety for the family is another one of my concern. But my issue is like, if, like one of the ladies said, if we had have known about this meeting and what's going on, we would have been down here earlier than this. And my issue is when the city did find out about the error, error that they had made, instilled them, you know, putting everything on halt, stopping, they continue on. When they know they was wrong, they continue on. Some of the letters that went out, we didn't get those letter when they first came out. We got the letters, like, on the second term. That's when we came in and we spoke to them. I think it was December 12, somewhere around that time. But they should have stopped. So, I make a request that they tear down those two houses because it's not safe. One catch on for the other one's right there. That's how close it is. Nowhere to park. If they have company, they have friends and family members over. Where in the world they want to park yet? They have nowhere to park. Morgantown, and not only that, the street busy. People, you know, they write the curb cards going in and out, children playing. They have nowhere. They have nowhere. When I was growing up in Morgantown, we had a lot of land. We made our own fields and decks and played softball. We ran around, you know, neighbors. We had that. But they don't have that. Yeah, it's 2024 compared back then, but still life is what we did, you know?
That's right.
So, no matter what year it is, you still want to enjoy your life. You want your children to enjoy their life. So, like I said, they need to turn both of them down, turn one around, like facing the other one, Hooker Street. And hey, we'll have a front yard and a backyard. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two more concerned about downtown safety. At this time, we'll recognize Nancy Roseborough, 406 West Front Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I don't need to repeat my name or address, so I'll have it.
Yep, I think we have, Beverly, we did, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your quick response to my letter. It's apparently been making the rounds, addressing some downtown safety concerns. I live downtown. I shop downtown. I patronize downtown businesses. I walk my dogs downtown. I'm the one with the dog. You probably see me. And I've just started to notice quite a few issues we have with safety, overall safety, things that are unsightly, things that are unsanitary. I did put them all in a letter, and I got a response from several people. I don't know if you have the latest version. I did make an extra copy. This includes the responses from the awesome officers with Groves and Police Department. There are some image documentation as well, some of the things that are going on. So, I'm encouraged by the acknowledgement, the recognition, and action that you all and other city agencies have taken and are taking to address these issues. So, my neighbors and I don't feel like we're out here on our own. I understand that there are legal constraints. Some of them come from the circuit courts, even the Supreme Court. So, there are only certain things you can do. There are limits. However, I'm hoping you're all aware, the current Supreme Court case of Grants Pass, Oregon versus, I believe it's Gloria Johnson, which is, they're here to address some of the constraints. And it tied cities and municipalities' hands when it comes to addressing some of these safety issues. So, I'm hoping they rule appropriately, and that will trickle down, and we can take a more, I guess, aggressive action addressing some of the issues. I want to publicly thank BPD officers Garringer and Grogan. We had a super productive meeting last week, and they patiently described the ongoing efforts to make downtown Burlington safe for everyone. Officers Garringer and Grogan are, are you chief, Baylon?
It's just a chief.
Okay, sixth and chief. I, I want to get this on the public record. They are consummate professionals. They are sharp, conscientious, creative problem solvers who generally care about their community. I'm sure those are standard traits for BPD members. But officers Garringer and Grogan are exceptional, and I want their discipline and dedication to be part of the public record. We are lucky to have them. All the highlighted areas in this letter are officers Garringer's responses to what you all are doing to keep downtown safe. I'm satisfied that we're all on the same page, just based on the feedback I've gotten from you all and some other city agency representatives. So, at this point, I just want to say thank you for your feedback and offer my assistance for any ongoing efforts as needed to keep our downtown safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very detailed.
Ma'am, if I could say something, if people like you, young ones, live downtown, if you see any issues, may I know who to call?
Yes, definitely.
Because, you know, this is things that have been going on for a while.
Yes, sir.
And I wish I could tell you it's going to disappear overnight. Am I sure it is?
Right.
But, you know, if we're consistent in identifying it and trying to continue to work to, to make this better, everybody wins.
Yes.
And certainly not trying to create more issues for people who have a lot of issues as we speak now. But the bigger picture has to be addressed.
Absolutely. Because we want a vibrant downtown. Burlington's an awesome city. We want visitors and residents and shoppers to come and enjoy all that this city has to offer.
Thank you. Thanks. And last, this evening, downtown safety, Kate White, 423 West Davis Street.
Everything she said.
So, Beverly, let the records state that Ms. White is in agreement. Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comments. We'll move to city council comments. Couple of items. One is, Peter, is this your last meeting with us?
Yes, sir, it is.
Well, Peter Bishop will be leaving our employment from the City of Burlington, moving to our taking role with High Point.
Is that correct?
So, I, for one, would like to tell you how much I appreciate the efforts that you put forth. We, we took a concept, this council at the time, took a concept of what we would like to do from an economic development standpoint, and how that would look if we owned that position as a staff position and took it from scratch and moved it forward into a pretty viable and self-sustaining and award-winning entity. And seven years, is that right?
Yes.
So, and done with the utmost professionalism with those items and beyond. So, thank you for your service this evening. We really do appreciate it.
Peter, I know you've got that hair on the side. It's probably quite the same color.
You've earned stripes then. Look at yourself. Yep. Other item, you know, we hear things about tonight under public comments. We heard several items, obviously, about downtown safety and some of the issues at Morgantown. I really want to tell, tell city staff how much we appreciate when there is a problem. And I know with downtown issue, going back two years ago, Ronnie, you sort of took the lead on that with Morgan and
Chief Wong.
Chief Wong at the time. And we really started identifying one item at a time. And how can we approach this? And how can we look at it from a, just a holistic standpoint? That what authorities do we have? And how can we do that? And we've heard from property owners. We've heard from business owners. We've heard from the Downtown Corporation. We had multiple departments involved, and we learned a lot. And it is never a job completed. It is always work in process. So, I know city staff's worked hard on that for a couple of years. And I think largely, that's why the response was so quick and detailed, is because it's been there. But constant feedback is important because all of us, we, we move on to the next item sometimes. You know, there, there's always going to be something else. And then it, it shifts our attention, and we move in another area. And, and then other things, you know, our city staff does a really good job at working with our boards and commissions and working through any of the issues we've had. I've done this for 17 years now. And we make mistakes. The city makes mistakes. They make mistakes in, in all areas of the city, whether it's West Burlington or not. I tell everybody, there's a building on University Drive that's facing backwards, and that's in West Burlington. So, mistakes are made. But the diligence in which city staff works on items to try to create solutions, and we don't, we don't have the feedback on that. But I appreciate city staff's efforts in trying to work with those that are involved and our different boards and commissions to get those things handled. And I want everyone to understand that they're always in good hands. And I'm, I'm sure that city staff's on top of these things. And then the last item that I had really is, I think we talked about it a little bit, but I, I know during the storms, we had recently all the rain. I know there are a lot of calls for service. There's a lot of PD calls. There's a lot of fire calls. There's a lot of flooding in areas and things like that. I've had several people reach out to me and say, what a good job our city staff did, and how they approached things. And I think it's really important that when we have an event like that, and it was pretty dynamic, I've seen areas of the city flood that I haven't seen flood in quite some time. So, everybody's efforts is greatly appreciated. Any other council comments? If not, I think there's been a request to enter into closed session.
City Council, local, going to closed session this time for suit of CDS 133, 311, 830 for the purpose of considering structural legal counsel on handling of claims against the city and the existing legal action of William Bush versus Davis, City of Burlington and Clark, Hamilton Superior Court, file 23 CBS 205.
Okay, we've had a request by our city attorney to enter into closed session. As stated, is there a motion to enter into closed session? So, move. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we'll enter into closed session.
Could you bring that up?
Second, all in favor, signify by aye.